I mean, the Connersville Council will come to order. We will have the pledge by Councilman Mike Bishop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have an invocation offered by Mr. Matt French. Can you please keep the mayor your thoughts too? He's having some back issues right now. Appreciate it.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you so much for what you've done in our lives, God, in this town. God, we pray for every single man, every single woman in this room. God, we pray over time. You just give them more and more wisdom, Lord, and help them in times that this city needs wisdom. And God, no matter our election to come in the United States, God, I pray that you help this town stand on your truth, stand on the real the real truth, God. And I just pray for our mayor, Lord, that you allow him to lead this town. And as he leads this town, God, I pray you lead him. Lord, we love you, we thank you. And it's in Jesus' name I pray.
Thank you.
All right. First thing, let's make sure everybody turns their cellphone ringers off there. Make sure it wasn't that big here. And we'll start with roll call.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips? Councilwoman Nettie?
Present.
Councilwoman Durham? Councilwoman Frank?
Present.
Councilwoman Bishop?
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Present.
We have a form, we can do business. Now we'll move on to the reading of the minutes from the October 3 meeting.
Make motion we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
May I apply a second that we read the minutes or accept the minutes as presented? Is there all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose aye. Motion passes. On to new business. First item is approval of permission letter for Star Development Incorporated. Is that you, Diane?
Star Development will be doing the application for us for housing rehab, which we have discussed earlier. And this is just a letter to authorizing them to move forward and do the public hearing. We will do that at the Miller Center. And it'll be published in the paper. Or we're doing it in John Roberts Building, I'm sorry. Because this room's just not large enough to hold all the people. I think last time we had about 250 participants in the public hearing.
Just to clarify, this is something we've done before, correct?
Oh, yes.
And this where they basically provide us a certain amount of funds for redo roofs, doorways, things like that?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
And is it, what's the, what's our contribution? Do we have a match on this?
We have not discussed that yet. As she gets in a little more into the application, last time we put in about $3,500. Of course, as times get tougher, the grants get a little more competitive. I'd like to see the council put a little more in this time if we can.
When do we have to obligate ourselves to that amount?
The, it wouldn't be until 2017. The application won't, hasn't even come out yet. This is all just getting ready. So that when the application comes out, we can just move, move forward.
Now, if I recall, wasn't that a significant amount of money?
It was $350,000, yeah. Each house is eligible for up to $25,000 per home. And we did quite a few last time. I didn't get the final count because they were able to add a couple in at the last minute because of, things came in a little cheaper than what they had anticipated. So they, they give them that little bit of leeway in the grant.
George does a good job following up on this and handling it.
They do. They, they have done this for years. That's their expertise and the...
We just need a motion to move on with it.
So we move to approve the authorization of the public hearing for them to conduct it? Is that what we're asking for?
Yes.
I move that we do that.
Second. May I apply a second that we give permission to advertise for a public hearing for the Star Development? Any debate? Seeing an empty vote, all of them say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
On to Resolution 2016-32, it's to transfer money from the general fund to first aid non-reverting fund. And we also have another resolution that is very similar to this. And it is a resolution of money coming back in for council lighting repairs to damage pump at Gray Road at Pump House. Take those independently or at the same time if you guys like.
Maybe we'll take them together.
May I apply a second that we accept Resolution 2016-31 and 2016-32? Is there any debate? Seeing an empty vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. Onto the final reading of the budget, approval for the 2016 budget. We've discussed this, passed on the first reading. This will be the final reading of this. As a, as a member of the budget committee, it looked like a sound budget. It's definitely fundable. I can't remember the name of the letters of that organization. Was it D L G?
D L G.
I knew it was in there. They say it's fundable, and that's the organization for state, so... What's your play?
I make a motion we pass the budget as presented.
I'll second that.
May I apply a second that we pass the budget for 2017 as presented on third and final reading during debate? Seeing an empty vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion passes. On to pending ordinances, all the salary ordinances that we did not look at last time. First aid, salary ordinance for the part contractual, salary ordinance for the part non-contractual, salary ordinance for DOT and MVH, salary ordinance for the transfer station, salary ordinance for the transportation, transportation and solid waste. And then the, oh... We do need to look at the salary ordinances because by state law, they need to be passed by the end of October. So even if we need to amend them later, because we don't have the contracts done, we need to do something with them today. So we can take them independently or we can take them together.
Take them together, my opinion. Nothing's changed, no.
I agree.
So we have a motion on that?
Certainly.
Second.
May I apply a second that we accept pending ordinance 3278, 3279, 3280, 3282, 3283, and 3284 for salary ordinances?
What about 88?
88 is a transfer. Oh, it's the airport, sorry. Is there any debate on those ordinances, on the salary ordinances?
There's been no change in those as of now.
No.
Correct.
Any further debate? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Salary ordinance is passed. We need to pass on the final. All right, so we need to, we have a motion to suspend rules on those.
Second.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules has been moved by seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes, third and final.
So moved.
There's a second. May I apply a second that we pass the salary ordinance on the third and final reading? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion's passed. On the pending ordinance 3288, transfer within the airport department. Should be pretty easy to look at. Transferred within the airport department. There's money that is handled by the airport. It's not really taxpayer money, so it looks like it's going from improvements to furniture. A total of $800.
Do we know what that's for?
We did additional appropriations last fall for these improvements, which didn't get purchased until this year.
For the new facility?
For the remodeled terminal building. And so we just have to do some transferring to make sure the funds are covered.
I was speculating that's what it was. If you guys haven't been up there, it's really nice. I'd recommend going to lay that out. It's really, really nice up there.
Yes.
So what would I do with pending ordinance 3288?
I move that we pass pending ordinance 3288.
Second.
May I apply properly second that we pass pending ordinance 3288? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. Onto pending ordinance... Oh, that's right. Is there a motion to suspend rules on that one?
Second.
All right, may I apply second to suspend rules? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. You got a motion for the third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
May I apply second that we approve the pending ordinance 3288 on third and final? Is there any debate? Seeing an empty vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? All right, now we're on to pending ordinance 3289. It's to transfer from the clerk treasurer to the cemetery. We got them out, Rosemary?
It's to cover their storm water. And eventually next year, we'll have to do that as well because the storm water fee had increased and I did not adjust the budget accordingly.
But this says water sewer, so it should have...
It's really, that's the name of the appropriation account. Where it's really for the storm water fees. Is that correct, Brad? Thank you.
And just for public knowledge, it's not a large amount, it's $500, so I don't want a large number here. So what would I do with this ordinance?
Make a motion we pass this ordinance of transfer of funds?
Second.
May I apply second that we pass pending ordinance 3289, transfer funds from the clerk treasurer to the cemetery for storm water? Is there any debate? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I apply a second that we suspend the rules? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. On the third and final. Is there a motion?
Second.
May I apply second to accept on third and final reading? It is, is there any debate? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. Pending ordinance 3290. This was one that was, go back to desk there. This is the transfer of first aid unit. $6,000 from specially paid to medical supplies. Dale's not here tonight.
Does this have anything to do with us when we inherited from the hospital?
Yes, it does. We didn't make the adjustment. We missed this appropriation when we were doing the other additional. But so we had monies here that we could transfer, so...
Is this going to cause a problem with the specially paid?
No, this should take us, should take us through the end of the year.
End of the year, I hope.
Okay.
I move we accept ordinance 6350, pass it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any debate on the pending ordinance 3290? Seeing an empty vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
May I apply second that we suspend the rules? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. And on to the third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
May I apply second that we pass 3290 pending ordinance 3290 on third and final reading? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. All righty. What was my agenda, we're on to old business? Am I having old business?
Brad, when are you going to shut down Third Street, so everyone knows?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, for how long?
All day, close to.
Inticipating. What time are you going to shut it down in the morning?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
We've spent about a week notifying everybody, so I think everybody's got their...
I just want to get it on camera so everyone knew.
Any other old business?
Oh, by the way, somehow the information goes across the Facebook also. Good way to do it. And Terry, like at 911 sent it out, everybody... I got it through Everbridge also. So, yeah. All those medias combined, along with the radio and newspaper, I think it's pretty, pretty well informed. I appreciate you doing that well, well in advance. That's a busy road.
Very good. Any other items of old business? All right, going on to miscellaneous business. First item of business that we have here is a proclamation. If you want to read this proclamation. City of Connersville proclamation to all those, all these present may come greetings. Whereas the City of Connersville values the health and safety of all of our citizens and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, a contributing factor to these, factor in the three causes of death of teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas is a globe, is the goal of Red Ribbon Week in the City of Connersville to involve families, schools, businesses, church, law enforcement agencies, service organizations, and all aspects of this campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas there are many activities planned during Red Ribbon Week campaign in Connersville. Now therefore, this would be Harold Gordon, Mayor of City of Connersville, proud to stand before you today and proclaim that October 22 through October 30 as Red Ribbon Week. And encourage all citizens of Connersville to observe this day, the day in ways appropriate to its significance. In testimony therefore, I hear, I have here unto, unto set my hand and calls to fix the seal of Connersville on the 17th of October in the year of our Lord 2016, Mr. Harold Gordon. All righty, so proclamation for Red Ribbon Week? Let's discuss that.
So I am Kay Riker Payton.
And I'm Holly Dunn. And we are both sponsors at the SAD club out at the high school. And we brought some of, oh, and SAD is for students against destructive decisions. So that encompasses everything that kids can get involved. As you can see, I brought some proud members and some other of our helpers tonight to attend the proclamation. And, oh, the Red Ribbon Week activities, there are several. And we want to bring back the winners from the contest that they'll be holding at all the different schools. And some of the other upcoming events that we're going to be having that's sponsored by SAD and the Connersville Police Department is the Tall Cop Training, which I encourage everyone to sign up and go to that. It's, it's going to be fantastic. I've actually had a chance to hear. His name is Jerome Galilei, and he's a retired policeman that now travels the whole United States and does drug prevention and education. So essentially he'll, it's extraordinary opportunity. If you can go, you should go.
Can they register online for that?
Yeah, you can register online. Well, it will be, we're having the paper, and then Carol has a form, too, you can fill out there. So you can either online or by the, by the form, either way. And I'll tell you, just one more little infomercial about Jerome is we do a lot of trainings and go to a lot of things. The time flew. I mean, it was a room full of law enforcement, for the most part, in Shipshawana when we went. And he'll, he'll blow your mind. One of the things that he'll do is he'll come into our community, he'll probably go into Richmond and take some pictures of drug paraphernalia, sorry, can't speak today, or clothing, because there's a lot of clothing that promotes it. And you just don't know. You don't know what's hidden in plain sight, and he points that out, so...
And it's when, what time?
November 21st, November 21st.
Okay.
I'll have Melissa forward the flyer out on email. Okay. And it's nine to five, right? Actually, it's only 8:30 to 3:30. I'm sorry, 8:30 to 3:30. I lied to you, I didn't mean to. It is a daytime thing, and again, it includes meal, but it'll, it's worth your time. It's very, you would just be amazed at what's going on out there that you're not noticing. So it's really, I mean, I hope we can get more parents there, too. Anybody from the community, so they can know what's going on around them. It just tells you what to look for. Like things you wouldn't even think about, it's just right in front of you.
Again, where is it going to take place, or are they...
It's at the Miller Building. Miller Building.
Is it going to be recorded on Channel 3?
I don't know about that. And I don't know for, like, the information purposes of what Jerome presents.
It'd be worth asking.
Yeah, we can ask.
Would you like to introduce the young people with...
Well, I was going to do, I was going to do that. But one more thing. Where my partner in Wayne County, who has the same grant that me and Holly do, or have, they're going to be having a series of drug prevention classes. And these classes all offer CEUs, continuing education units. And that will be coming up also across the next year. We'll put that in a paper as well. And the SAD club will be doing several activities at the high school this year throughout the year. So I can have them introduce themselves now. Do you want them to sit there or come up here?
They can stand.
Okay. If you guys want to stand, one by one, and introduce yourself, we'll start here with Tabby.
I'm Tabby Silkott, and I'm the social worker for the elementary schools.
I'm Jessica Flum, and I'm here for two purposes. One, for providing health services, and two, because my daughter is a member of SAD.
I'm Brandy Truman, and I am a SAD mom.
I'm Brooklyn Truman, and I'm a member of SAD.
I'm Flum, and I'm a member of SAD.
I'm Brandy Truman, and I'm a member of SAD.
I'm Alexia Zerborg, and I'm a member of SAD.
I'm Kyra Stamper, and I'm a member of SAD.
And one more thing we're going to be working on this year. And as you can tell, Holly and I have both on a shirt. It says, "Most of Us." And we have, we have to turn around and show you the back.
Sorry.
Sorry. It says, "Most of Us Don't Use ATODs." Which is? Alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Because perception is, and this is not just in our community, but perception is across the United States, that everyone is doing drugs and alcohol, and in reality, they're not. And when perception, reception, perception can become reality to some people if they don't know the difference. So one of our campaigns that we're going to be doing with the kids and the community, and the community at large, is to get this message out there that most of us don't, and put the, and put the stats there beside it. And see the faces that you know in the pictures that, we're going to try to plaster the community with pictures and local people that you know, that with the little sign that says, "Most of Us," and then whatever they want to claim that they don't do, to change their perception. It's kind of looking at the glass. Is the glass half full or is it half empty? So we're going to try to work on changing that perception. Because if you can change the perception, you'll change the usage level, too. If you believe that everyone around you does drugs, then that's what's normal. It's like smoking. If you think everyone smokes, then it's not a big deal to try it. In reality, just like the shirts that a lot of our kids have on, it's 87% of freshmen in high school haven't been drunk or haven't drank. And so it's just the perception that, you know, we think that a lot of kids do it, or everybody's doing it, and that's not really the case. So, yeah, that's the, that's the gist of the campaign. That most of us don't, and we really appreciate all your time today. Yeah, thank you. If you have any questions?
No, but not only do I congratulate the parents who have stayed involved with the youth, but I greatly admire the youth. Because it's not always easy to stand up in front of your peers and say, "I do this or I don't do this." Because there's plenty of people who will ridicule you because they're doing wrong, and they want you to join them so they don't feel so bad. So I really admire you for standing up for what is right.
It's funny you should say that, Dave, because that was the one question that they were asked when they signed up. If they, if they were made aware that they would have to make that stand, if they would be willing to make that stand. And the answer was yes, and that would allow them to join.
I think they have great courage.
That's the only way.
And they had to know going in what they were going to be up against.
I think they have great courage for doing that.
Yes, they do.
You know, and I think it's fair to say that all of us know someone that is battling addiction. And I think kind of what we, we work for is just to prevent it from starting in the first place. I went to a conference last year and said that addiction is the only preventable mental illness. Because if you don't ever have, if you've never tried it, you're not going to become addicted.
And then another thing, too, I think there's only 2% of the government that spends money on prevention, and the rest is, on the other end, with like 98%. So we need to change that. And, you know, save money at the same time.
Prevention is key.
Yeah, and that's one of our, we're trying to encourage people that prevention is the key.
It is. I attended a funeral last week of a good friend of mine whose son passed away from drug abuse, and several of you were there. And that's something we need to be reminded of for our teens. Your stand is worth it. Because this child, I should say, this child started off small, did not expect to get where he got, and it impacted him through death. And that's something I don't ever want to see again. I mean, that was a good friend of mine, and that hurt. It hurt the community. That hurt a lot of people. So keep that in mind.
I've personally been through it when the DARE program first got started. And to Chad's point, it's just not a pleasant thing to have to get up and talk about. I speak a lot. I spoke last Saturday down here in the pavilion. And whatever you young people can do to help this, you got our support 120%, whatever you need.
Thank you.
I'm proud of you for doing what you're doing.
And stands together, know that we stand behind you.
The only thing I'd add to that is, even though it's hard to speak sometimes, you never know what your words are going, how they're going to affect someone in, in any instance. So, you know, just be brave and stand.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Appreciate it.
Harold got with me last week. And there are three boxes on some traffic signals that need to be replaced. And we're just asking for additional to, to be able to advertise for additional. There is plenty of funds in the capital improvement, no, cumulative capital improvement fund. And we need to advertise for $37,770 to replace the boxes at 18th and Grand, 6th and Grand, and 5th and Grand.
The signal boxes themselves?
Yes.
Is that the state or is that us, Brooklyn?
And this is us, because it's on Grand Avenue.
That's right, okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
18th, 6th, and what?
18th and Grand, 6th and Grand, and 5th and Grand.
Okay. Thank you.
Where are we, are they malfunctioning totally now?
I don't think they're malfunctioning totally, but they're on the last leg with...
Are those flashers?
No.
Is this where we have to bring an outside contractor in to take care of this? Or can our people do it? I think we have to bring someone in.
Signal construction is the only...
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. Thank you.
$37,770 would be the total cost.
So is there a motion to advertise for an additional for this?
So moved.
Second.
May I apply second that we advertise for an additional appropriation for, what'd you say, $37,000?
$37,770.
$37,770 for signal boxes? Is there any debate on this? All in favor, say aye?[1680.54]
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Motion passes. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Some, I don't have to, I'm sorry.
No, just to get for the...
Jump it again, jump it again. Uh, I got two other miscellaneous things I wanna bring up before, let everybody else go ahead. Uh, the Halloween party in the park is coming up October fif- uh, twenty-fifth, uh, from six to eight, so I encourage people to come out, enjoy the festivities there. And also, uh, yard waste is getting ready to change. Uh, yard waste, we will, uh, pick up and will run through November. Will pick up on Monday, November seventh and twenty-first, the twenty-first will be the last pickup for yard waste. Leaf, leaf machines will be being, uh, picked up by raked leaves on October, or Monday, October thirty-first, and machines will be picking up leaves through December second, weather permitting. The machines will use grand as a dividing line, they'll begin in the south end of town and work their way north through town. Please do not put lumps or limbs, lumps, rocks. We're like, what's a lump? And leaves, or they will not be picked up, remember, the compost, uh, will be open for the disposal of leaves, limbs, and grass. Is up on Tuesdays, Thursdays from eight AM to three PM, and Saturday from eight AM to eleven. If you have any questions, call the street department.
Yeah, probably, I'll just publicize in the newspaper, right?
I assume so. All right, anybody else have any miscellaneous business?
I do, if one may speak.
Sure thing.
I talked to Harold about this, and I also talked to Dale Muntz, and I was going through some of my notes for the EMS as far as the, uh, storage of the units that we took over back when, and that contract was up the first of September. I think it was, it's in September, I don't know the exact date, but there, the hospital is telling us just verbally to go ahead and continue to use that facility, and I think we need to get that in writing, for the simple fact, memories get short when money gets tight. And I made that same comment to Harold, and he's, he had, we're taking it under advisement, so. Uh, Rosemary, would you get that back to him, because Dale agreed with me, and we're looking aggressively for a home for the units, and I made a couple suggestions, and Harold, and I don't know whether they liked them or not, but that we gotta find a home for them, so, but it, that, that contract is up, so we need to get something in writing to cover us legally. That's all, thank you, Gay.
Any other miscellaneous business? All right, uh, public forum, is there any, uh, discussion or debate in the public? No? With that being closed, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? May I adjourn?